Great, thank you all for joining us. Columbian is pleased to welcome candidates for Clark County Councilor from District One, and glad you could all join us today. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the editorial page editor. And I'll let the other editorial board members introduce themselves. Scott?
Scott Campbell, I am the previous publisher to the current publisher.
Jody?
Jody Campbell, just on the editorial board.
Craig?
I'm Craig Brown, I'm the editor of the Columbian.
And then Colleen?
Hi, I'm Colleen Keller, I'm the Assistant News Editor.
And also an editorial board member. And in addition, we have a reporter sitting in. She won't be asking questions in this forum, but might want to speak with you later. And she will be taking notes and may write about this meeting. Now, oh, and one other piece of housekeeping is mentioned, we are recording this. We will post it unedited online. Now, for the important part, the candidates, please take just one to two minutes to introduce yourself, explain why you're running for this position, and then we'll move on to specific questions about various topics. And we'll start with Doug.
Sure, I'm Doug Coop, running for County Council, District One. And I'm kind of running because I believe we need less government regulation and more personal responsibility in Clark County. Leadership in the council has been pretty much stalled, and disunity has been going on. And I want to bring community-based solutions back into the council, address the needs of the community with those real solutions, and not just hypothetical things. So that's why I'm running.
Great, thank you. Hector?
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, my name is Hector Nahosa. I thank you very much for the opportunity to come and share my information and thoughts. Basically, I've just gotten to know too many people that are on the street because of their rent has gone up and their salary has not. I know too many folks that don't even know how they're going to buy groceries this week. So I see a county council that would rather stick to ideological opinions without identifying what the real problems are. So I have a 45-year career of solving problems. My job has been to show up, work with the principals to discuss the issues, and then identify the problem and work together to find that solution. So I feel about working together, we can help families, and I'm ready to step into the role to find out those solutions at the county council.
Great, thank you. And Glenn?
Yeah, I'm Glenn Young. And you know, I've been on the board of several different organizations. I currently serve as a board member of the Vancouver Neighborhood Alliance, as well as NAMI Southwest Washington. And you know, I got a family of five kids, five young kids, all the way from four to 17. I've got an amazing, incredible wife who's very supportive. And Clark County welcomed us about 20 years ago. And it was a very inviting place. There was economic opportunity. It was safe, it was a great place to live. And as a father and a husband, which are my most important roles, I want to make sure that that opportunity is there for my children, and that they don't have to leave Clark County as adults in order to be able to live their life. So I'd love to have them be able to stay near with every opportunity that they have. And I have a lot to offer. I have a lot of skills and background. I had an 11-year career in finance. I am a general contractor locally here. And so I understand land use issues, which is a lot of what we will be doing as members of the county council. And I just want to, I want to get things done for working families in Clark County, make sure that we can all stay here, that we're not being forced to leave, and that we can have a great community.
Great, thank you. And thanks again to each of you for joining us. Let's start with homelessness, which obviously is a big issue at both the city and the county level. From the county's perspective, how should they approach it? What solutions are viable? We'll start with Hector.
Yes. So, you'll give me just a moment. So regarding what the county can do. So RCW 3632-415 directs counties to make programs and funding available for low-income homeowners and development corporations. Vancouver has been leading the way with that type of funding. And I have personal experience, personal involvement in the nonprofit that is building truly small, affordable, permanent housing for homeless and very low-income individuals and families. These are models that the county can follow and participate in to alleviate homelessness in our community by seeking special grants and working in public and private with, excuse me, public-private collaboration. We can build truly affordable housing, and we can provide needed services to enable the homeless to regain dignity, the stability needed to find jobs and rebuild their lives. We have been doing that in our nonprofit. And in many cases, again, we, families have been reunited just from the fact that they actually have a home.
Now, you've mentioned that under state law, the county needs to be the lead local agency. Has the county been doing enough in that regard?
I believe they're finally stepping onto the plate, or up to the plate, that is. But I believe that the city has actually been doing a lot, a lot to alleviate homelessness in our county. And I do believe that the county can step up in a more, in a more aggressive and equitable way. Certainly, I think the county council can do a lot more, and I hope that I can help take part in that.
Doug, how should the county approach homelessness?
Well, the county should approach homelessness in the vein of, look, we need to get the communities involved in the homeless situation. I do this every week, every Wednesday. In fact, after we're done here, I'm going to do that. We have a homeless ministry for every Wednesday and every last Saturday of the month to the sharehouse area. So I've been doing that for years here. So I know what the homeless situation is about. Now, the Council on Homelessness said, yeah, there's 8% less new people becoming homeless, but yet the rate of overall homelessness has risen. So the only way to address that, and we know even from UCLA studies, that a lot of that is drugs and mental illness. And they go hand in hand because one causes the other. Okay? So we need to, in the county level, bring the faith communities together, health leaders, business owners, and other community organizations together to work for the real solutions that address the homelessness. That means, you know, we've got to address drug addictions, all these things that go along with that. But we wanted, what we want to do, and I'm working on an idea also with Ray Reynolds, who is running for sheriff, to create a net program. Because if we leave government officials in charge of this, it just becomes another business. Okay? So it's a community problem. At the county level, yes, we're responsible for a lot of things, but it is a community problem, and we need to address it as a community. Get everybody on board in the net program. Well, basically, we're working, hopefully, to get this app done, where we have an app to be able to give in the hands of law enforcement officials and other officials who are working directly with the homeless, to have a one-stop shop, so to speak, to address the issues. And when they need help, be able to go up to them and say, "Look, we've got the resources, the county's got a $10 million surplus." We can also go ahead and aggregate ARPA funds to some of this, to these faith organizations, community organizations, and get them the help to strengthen that, to address the issues that these people have, whether it be shelter, whether it be food, whether it be, you know, intervention crisis for drug addiction, whether it be mental illness, all these things. We have the resources available at that point, then, to go ahead and grab them individually and say, hey, we've got the resources, we've got the mechanisms in place. Let's get you the help that you need, get you restored with dignity, back into the community, and let's do it that way. That's a more positive approach than saying, because even last year, when I was going through this with the city, the city would say, hey, you know, it's the county's problem. And the county's saying, hey, no, that's not our jurisdiction, that's your problem. No, it's a community problem. So we need to address it in that vein, and I think we can accomplish it.
When you say "community," then you mean primarily through private organizations rather than the public, the government? Okay, thank you. Glenn?
Get them the funding through those organizations so that they can do the job that they need to do.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
Yeah, you know, my family cooks twice a week, and we have for years, for an organization called Free Hot Soup. And that is a wonderful asset to the community, but all it does is temporarily provide, it doesn't solve any problems. And I always try to relate to individuals by kind of using something that they can connect to. You know, we all have things about ourselves individually that we struggle with or that we would like to change. Many of us on the 1st of January make goals that only last, however long it's going to last. So when we have maybe habits or things we need to or want to change about ourselves, it's very difficult to do. Now, we have roofs over our heads, we have stability in our homes, we have a regular supply of food available to us. And so if you try to imagine some of those things that you might set goals for in January, and try to do it without any shelter over your head and living in complete chaos at all times, and being exposed to trauma in many different ways, you can see that it's nearly impossible at that point to make those changes. So one of the directions that the county has been headed for a long time is working towards permanent supportive housing for individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And I agree with that plan, but sometimes the implementation needs to be studied and looked at a little bit more. One of the most important things that we need to do for these individuals is get them sheltered immediately. Because the longer that they are outside, the longer they're subjected to that trauma, and the more damage that is done to them emotionally, physically, and mentally. So we have got to set our priority. And when we're looking at permanent supportive housing coming in at $460,000 a unit, like Lincoln Place Two, now, don't get me wrong, those units are important, but if you look at the city and how they've worked, I work very closely with Jamie Spinelli, who's doing a phenomenal job with our city. And you know, for somewhere around $30,000, you can create a temporary shelter. May not be as great as permanent housing, but it gets you shelter over your head, and it allows that stability that is needed for those cortisol levels to start to level out so that those individuals can begin working on what led to their homelessness to begin with. So I think that, oh, go ahead, apologize.
Quick question, so the 30,000, is that like per person or like per couple or?
That is per unit.
Per unit, okay. And how, well, that, does that hold one person, people to?
The way the city has it, it can hold two individuals, but they're kind of holding, they're allowing single occupancy if there's not another relative or, you know, connected party there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Craig?
Sheriff Atkins has talked about the Clark County jail being undersized and out of date and unsafe, and that it advocates for replacing it. What's your view on what should be done to solve the problems with the jail? So maybe Glenn would like to start with that question.
Sure. You know, I toured the jail just a few weeks ago, and it was rather depressing, if I might leave it that way. It was a very dark and dim place, very old. The infrastructure is completely outdated. It was built, I believe, in 1984. It's been updated a few times. But you know, a commercial building like that can only be updated so many times before the real infrastructure behind it fails and isn't working properly. And so I do believe that we need a new facility. Whether we can add additional space to it or replace it, I think will need to be left up to the voters because there's a significant difference in cost between those two options. But I'm very supportive of successful law enforcement in our county. We have to fund our law enforcement community. We have to make sure that our officers are paid a, you know, a good sum of money to where we don't continue to lose them to other jurisdictions because that is what is currently taking place. But the jail needs to be reimagined to a large degree and bring a lot of new best practices into place to where we can help people heal and get better rather than just hold them in the facility.
So would you favor an entirely new facility? Should we start from scratch, or can this one be modified?
I would favor a new one. But again, that I believe should be left up to the taxpayer to decide. I mean, that's a large investment, and it's going to be a big ask from the community. And I think that we should go directly to them and let them decide.
Hector, what's your view?
Well, in lots of discussions with the sheriff's office over the last few years, a new jail has come up various times. We should understand that a new jail would approximately cost $400 million. So do we have the funding to be able to throw into that, a new facility? So I believe that we can find another way. I think Glenn alluded to it a little bit, but the fact is that we could build a facility similar to what the Colorado Homeless Alliance has done in Denver. They combine a medium security housing that would allow people to, in the system, to still be able to go out and be gainfully employed and still pay their debt to society. That would cost probably less than a quarter of what it would cost for a brand-new jail. We could take folks that are able to work, help them be in a secure location, have curfew, and basically a work release program so that they would still be contributing to our community, but still serving their time. So I think that would cost much, much less, alleviate a lot of the issues within the jail. And of course, we could definitely fund more services within the jail so that when folks have served their time, they could come out and be more productive in our, in our community.
So under that model, any idea what percentage of people in the jail would be allowed on work release? Would that be everybody? Would it only be a handful?
I would say that it's a significant portion, but certainly not all, and not everyone. I think folks that are in there for, you know, trespassing or causing nuisance, or even some of the folks that have mental health issues. If we could find a better way to get them out of the jail, out of the jail and into still secure housing, mind you, still have a curfew, but we'd be able to alleviate, or excuse me, make space within the jail for larger, for more serious offenders. So I think we could find that good balance between the two and be able to free up space within the jail and still be able to provide security for our community by having folks still serve their time.
Great, thank you. Doug, what should the county do about the jail?
Well, the county can't do a whole lot unless you want to write a check for $500 million right away, brother. Kind of donate it for the jail, but you know, I'm in favor of what do we need to do now? We can actually move forward with a modular type of approach by adding on to the existing jail until we get to the time where we can get the funds needed to get a new jail. I was mentioned about mental health, I mean, people you put in there. We have one mental health facility. We need to work to get more of that also, not just the jail. So that's a lot of tough things that we have to answer, but coming up with $400 to $500 million right off the get-go for the county is not feasible at this point. So I think we need to go with the modular, as-you-go type of approach to that jail.
As discussion about the jail, if they do settle upon a possible plan, should that be up to voters, or is it the council that will decide?
No, you're going to have to put something like that on the ballot with, you know, the people. The people are going to have to come up with that. That's not, that's something, that's not funds that the county, at this point, has access to.
Sure.
That's just being realistic.
In talking about funding, Doug, would you, looking ahead for the next fiscal year, would you vote in favor of the permissible 1% property tax levy increase?
I'd have to study that. Right now, I'm looking at, because I'm basically running on, I don't want to see more, in the current climate, economic climate that we're in, I don't want to see more tax hikes. I would rather see where we can reallocate from certain places. After my talking with Peter Norwick over there at the county assessors, I mean, a very small part, okay, of our taxes that go to the county are used for county purposes. Now, a big portion of that is going to Washington State schools. A big chunk of that is going to Vancouver City, Vancouver schools, libraries. So we're going to have to look at how we can reallocate some of those funds because I want to educate people and say, hey, you know what? We're giving too much money to the school district, number one, because you have less students and they're failing our kids academically. Okay? So to educate the populace and say, hey, you know, don't be voting for more levies because that money that supposedly is supposed to go to the county is actually going to them. Like I said, a small portion of that goes to the actual Clark County. When you have a dispersment that's going to Washington State schools, they have a $15 billion surplus. Why do we have to keep supplying more money?
So locally, you are not in favor of school levies and school bond measures?
No, I'm not at this point, not when they're failing our kids academically. Look at the OSPE reports, straight out of the government.
So would that help to reduce funding? Would that help them get better if you reduce funding?
No, I would, that would make them hopefully get better.
Okay. Hector, would you, for this year, would you be in favor of the 1% tax levy increase?
Are you discussing the resolution currently proposed?
No, just the annual, every year, when the county puts together the budget and it considers whether or not to take the permissible 1% increase.
I believe this is a perfect example of why we definitely need to look at taking that 1% increase. So these are, these are services that are needed by our community. These are not frivolous things, they're much-needed services. And I think we have, and currently, the proposal is, it has clear, concise language in that particular resolution. And that's what we need to explain to the citizens why a tax lev, or the tax hike is needed. And as long as we do it in a clear, concise manner and explain why, I believe that people would understand that these are services that benefit the entire county. And I think if we can do that, we can explain it to the people, then I believe that it would pass because people would then understand why we were doing it.
Glenn, would you take the 1%?
Yeah, you know, I think that this is a subject that very, very many people misunderstand and don't quite comprehend what it actually is. And I tell people, last year, if you didn't get an 8% increase in your salary, you're actually running worse off than you were last year. And it's equally so with the county. The county is experiencing inflation just as individuals are. And 1% isn't even close to that 8% inflation rate that we're having. So I don't think people, a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of fundamental understanding of how that works. It is really not, and I don't look at it as a tax increase at all. It is us trying to stay put or equal with inflation. And so absolutely, we, in my opinion, we've made mistakes in the past by not taking that. It's led to a deficiency in funding for many different things in our county.
Okay, thank you. Colleen, you have anything?
Yeah, I would like to know what the three of you think of the matter that will be on the ballot for the sales tax hike for funding for the sheriff's office, the body and dash cams. Do you support that approach, or would you try to go another way? And Hector, let's begin with you.
So over the course of the last about five or six years, discussions with the sheriff's department has included many of the things that are on Proposition 11. The fact that we're down a lot of deputy sheriffs. Our population has increased, and we don't have enough deputies to cover the territory. Body cams are in that proposal. And I think the majority of the population, the man on the street wants to have body cams. And the sheriff, sheriff's department itself has stated that they would like to have the body cams. So those things are items that the majority of us want and would provide for better public safety. And so I believe it's something that we need.
Okay, Doug, how about you?
You don't need to do that, we already have the funds. You can allocate one-time-use grant funds from the ARPA fund for community service. They've got $15 million remaining. We can draw from that and buy the body cams, no problem.
And then how about continued funding that would be needed for the personnel handling public reference requests, et cetera?
Yeah.
Is there enough funding for all that, is what you're saying?
Funding for that, for, you know, let's put it into process for the one year. Then we can look at the ongoing maintenance of that with the body cams and the personnel. We'll look at the county budget there to see where we can manipulate funds to keep that ongoing.
Okay, and then Glenn, how about you?
Yeah, along the lines of the previous conversation that we had, this structural deficiency that we've had by being, first of all, being restricted to 1%, and then sometimes not actually taking that 1% increase, has led to real challenges in funding in multiple areas. I mean, we're seeing, you know, our sheriff write editorials and comments to the Columbian that are expressing this severe deficiency in funding for his department. Could we tighten our belt a little bit? Yes, but I don't think we would get there to cover the cost of this program. I'm fully supportive of having our law enforcement have body cams. And unfortunately, we have not done our due diligence to keep our funding at a level even with inflation, and so we don't have that funding. So I do support it, and I think it is a good thing for our community. And I do believe that our voters will approve it.
To follow up on that, Doug, is that the sheriff, the current sheriff, has said that they're underfunded, they don't have enough deputies. Would you increase funding for the sheriff's department, or how would you approach that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, you're supposed to have four sheriffs per thousand people. You've got less than half a man per thousand people. You've got sheriffs there that they're not able to keep them because they're making 26% less than the Vancouver PD officers. I mean, most of your detectives come out of the sheriff's department. So if you want to solve real crime, you've got to get the funding into the sheriff's, you know, department. We need to reinstitute the volunteer sheriff's program also in the sheriff's department. This way, excuse me, you free up resources for these trainees and these volunteer personnel to go out and deal with low-level incidences, like traffic incidences or things like that, or, you know, policing at events and things like that, where you can put your already highly-trained officers to work and keep them on, you know, serious crimes and things of that nature that go on. So there's a way to do that, the volunteer sheriff's department. But yes, we need to fully fund the sheriff's department, get them So there's a way to do that, the volunteer sheriff's department, but yes, we need to fully fund the sheriff's department, get them back up to speed, because I don't know if you know this or not, but they are the lowest-funded sheriff's department in the entire US.
So where, where would that money come from? Do, do you need to raise taxes, or is the money there?
I, well, like I said, they have a $10 million surplus right now in the county, okay? That's a fact. So I will look at, when I get in there, to see what the budget looks like. I can't do that from sitting outside, okay? But getting in there to see where these resources can be reallocated and moved around to facilitate getting the sheriffs up to speed, that's what I will do.
Um, Hector, should the, uh, sheriff's office have increased funding, or how should the county approach that?
Well, considering the fact that, that we don't have enough deputy sheriffs, so just, just in that alone means that with the funding would have to increase. So I believe that it would need to increase so we could hire more, uh, deputy sheriffs. Uh, to go through the, the training that, uh, our citizens are asking for and, uh, get them out in the field. So yes, I, I do believe that it needs to be increased. Uh, uh, I believe, um, yeah, so plain and simple, we do need to increase it. Uh, we have to provide for the public safety, and so that's what folks expect, that's what folks require, and that's what we, uh, have a duty to do. Um, I do stress that, uh, as new recruits come in, that we do, uh, the, the newest, uh, training available to make sure that they are competent in, uh, in doing their jobs. And so, um, those ongoing discussions with the sheriff's uh, office, uh, need to continue, and we can work together to, uh, make it more equitable and, and, uh, allow for the public safety. So yes.
And where, where would that additional funding come from? Would that be a tax increase, or?
I think we could do one-time, uh, grants which are, uh, are available, but in the long term, I, I believe that we would have to, uh, face facts and, uh, understand that as population increases, services, uh, cost more because there's more personnel needed. And that funding comes from, uh, from the, from taxes we collect.
Thank you. Uh, Glenn, would you, uh, increase funding for the sheriffs?
Yeah, absolutely, I would. And, you know, the question comes, where do we get those funds from? And I don't believe that we have those funds to do that, to invest in that. And so what I think we're gonna have to do is we're gonna really have to work together with the community. We're gonna have to have a very transparent process. And I don't think anybody in our community has not noticed the uptick in crime and the the livability change that we're experiencing in our community. And I really believe that if we're transparent and we show the voters what we plan to achieve, we, we give them a real plan to follow by on how we can make changes that are gonna address many of the difficult challenges that we face, that we can go to them and ask them. And also, again, it's about explaining uh, much better about the financial situation and how our funding has literally decreased year over year, even when we took the 1% increase. So I think that's important to have a, a good community discussion and be transparent about it, so everybody understands what they're voting for and what they'll get from their vote.
Uh, Scott or Jody, do you have anything specific?
I have a question about the, the future county council's support of the, of the I-5 bridge project. Can you tell us where you, where you stand on, on that? Doug, could you start?
Sure. Absolutely not. We need a third bridge now. That's what I support, because, I mean, this team with Greg Johnson and, oh, they're just misleading people. You're talking about something that's gonna cost up to $5 billion when I could build a third bridge now, and the plans have already been out there for 20 years. If you go to thirdbridgenow.org, you'll see all that. I mean, it's the most common sense application. It'd cost a billion dollars to put in a third bridge. Why would I wanna put in $5 billion to build a, a a light rail system that wants to come over into Vancouver? All, all it is is taking money from Vancouver citizens and they wanna put up tolls and all this stuff. This is totally nonsensical. I mean, think about it in a common sense perspective. You wanna just work on one I-5 bridge, okay? Now, they talk about, yes, we need the seismic upgrade and we need all these things, but wouldn't it be better? Okay, and we're gonna do that, by the way, eventually. But we need a third bridge now to divert the traffic, the freight, which would go over to Savve Island, which, which connect over to the 30 and back onto the 5, because what happens on the I-5 bridge there, you'll never change the congestion when it hits the Rose Quarter. I'm sorry. You could, you could say all that you want, but that's reality. That's not gonna change anything. And they're talking about, excuse me, that, uh, you know, they're gonna have uh, all this ridership on, on rail and buses going over the I-5. You know what? That's not gonna happen. They say they're gonna have 26,000 to 33,000 people, you know, by 2045 using transit on the I-5 alone. I say, that's pie in the sky. They got less than 1,000 people on the 205 and the I-5 using transit, okay? People like their cars. I'm sorry, this is America. This is, cars represent freedom. They're just trying to, to make their, their transit systems look good while they're losing money all the time with 10% recovery costs with C-Trans. It's just, it's going nowhere, okay?
So you, you would favor a third bridge to the west?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, you look at it, it's gonna be much more cost-effective. You're not gonna have to fight with the Coast Guard. You know, the, the, the plan is already there. They got agreements with the railroad. The whole thing is a much better, and think of it in this aspect, okay? Normally, you would say you want to have more safety and, and all this, but doesn't it make sense to have more avenues? If there is a natural disaster, God forbid, wouldn't it make more sense to have more avenues of transit and exit in and out and over the river? Okay, not just depending on 205 and I-5 alone, but having more. I can get two more bridges for less money than what they wanna propose for this I-5 project, IBR thing. And nobody wants tolls. They're already collecting 374 approximately million dollars in income taxes out of the people of Vancouver already that go over there to work in Portland and, and, and on that side. And yet they wanna take more money from us. I say, no.
Okay, thanks. Uh, you're going?
Way in on that?
I just, can I ask one quick question? So Doug, you, you don't think that the I-5 bridge needs to have any upgrades for safety?
It, it will eventually, but to say that it's gonna cost $5 billion and it'll take them to 2034 to get it done. You know how many closures and things it'll go on and the congestion it'll cause by doing it that way? Where if you put in a third bridge much faster, you can divert traffic then and get the work that needs to be done on the I-5 bridge much faster and more efficiently.
Okay, thanks. Hector?
Hector, you're up.
Yes, thank you. So I do believe that we do need to replace, we do need to replace the, uh, interstate bridge. Regarding the $5 billion price tag, uh, 10 years ago, the price tag was 3.5 million, sorry, 34.5 billion. So we have, uh, the longer we delay this, uh, replacement, uh, the more it's gonna cost. So we've already eaten up, uh, what, one and a half billion dollars in increases? So, uh, I believe that we need to go ahead and, and build it. Uh, regarding a third bridge, uh, the cost estimates don't include the construction costs of all the approaches. Uh, folks who press for a third bridge, uh, don't take into consideration that it would, it would appropriate uh, a lot of, uh, private land by eminent domain. So, uh, we, we would face a, a large, uh, a, a large, uh, pushback, uh, once we start appropriating that land through, through eminent domain. So, it, the cost of, uh, building a third bridge is, is, uh, grossly underestimated, I believe. So we should go ahead and move, uh, regarding, go ahead and start building this bridge. Uh, we're just, uh, burning more money and, and, uh, increase costs the longer we wait.
Glenn?
Yeah, this is a, this is a tough question. So do I feel like the LPA is the best thing for Clark County? I don't think so. I think there are a lot of things that we could have better for Clark County. I would love to see a third bridge. I think we really need a third bridge eventually, but I'm also a realist about the position that we're in. And quite frankly, we're, we're dealing with, with multiple, multiple partners. And first and foremost, Clark County really has very, very little that they're able to do that toward this. I really feel that, feel that as a, as a county councillor, our function is to really advocate for the things that are right for Clark County. We have a partner across the river, a council member of Portland that stated that if it were up to them, that they would replace the bridge, tear it down and replace it with a bridge that did not have access to any single occupancy vehicles. And that's the reality of the partners that we're dealing with here. And if we were to decide that this project didn't benefit Clark County enough and to kill it, the reality is 10 years later, when conversation starts again about a new bridge, it would be about the I-5 bridge. So I'm, I'm a realist and I'll, I'll take what I can get and I'll advocate for Clark County as much as I possibly can to get as, as much that can benefit our community as possible and advocate that we're not adversely affected by things like tolls and things like that. So I am supportive of moving forward and perhaps in the future, after we complete this project, we can then start to talk about another crossing and hopefully we have a willing partner at that time.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Jody, did you have anything?
I'm good, thanks, though.
The, uh, the county recently went through a very contentious redistricting process for county council seats. Um, aside from the eventual decision, what were your thoughts about the process and how that played out? And we'll start with Doug.
Hey, the process is the process. It took them too long to, in my thinking, but hey, they finally got there at the last minute. So, yeah, that, that could be streamlined, streamlined a little better. I mean, when you, when you get unity back in the council again, those things might be going a little bit better in the future. So.
So would, uh, are you saying you would provide unity with all the current council members?
Yeah, especially the ones that are coming in for District 2 and District 5 also. We'll have more unity in the council. We can get things done.
Uh, Hector, your, uh, thoughts about the process and how that played out for redistricting?
Well, the process was definitely flawed, um, uh, too much contention about, uh, how it should be divided. Um, there was a public vote, um, whether or not, uh, the lines were finally drawn correctly, um, that'll have to be, uh, played out over time. Um, I don't necessarily agree that we did it the right way. I think there's some folks that are, uh, underrepresented uh, the way the, the the lines were drawn. Um, some folks, there's too many on, in, in one particular, uh, it, it was not an even number of voters, uh, divided among the five districts. So uh, the process could have been much better. Um, it should have been a lot less contentious. And, uh, I believe that, uh, we can do better next time, and we should do better next time by, uh, getting more, uh, citizen input, uh, of what of what we need to do in order to represent everyone fairly and divide the districts fairly.
Thank you. Glenn, your thoughts about the redistricting?
Yeah, you know, I think this issue really showed some of the, the the division that exists among the council ideologically. And this is why I feel like our county voted to change our elections to be nonpartisan, because they want individuals that are willing to work with each other, that are willing to build on commonalities between each other and have a good relationship to where dysfunction like this doesn't take place. I spoke to an individual that had actually planned to run for office and where he lived, he was in the district, out of the district, in the district, and ultimately out of the district. And so he was ultimately excluded from that process. So I think the, the most harm that was done in that situation is, is a damage to the credibility of our citizens. They wanna see a council that's functional, that's able to work together and get things done.
Now, and as you mentioned, the disposition is now nonpartisan for the first time. Um, Glenn, do you have a preference for one party or the other?
I am nonpartisan. I am an independent. And the reason why I am is because I see good values and I see good ideas on both sides of the aisle. Sometimes we get so caught up in our own vision of things that we stop to take a moment to take in any new input. And I think all of that input is, is important. And I honestly believe that you can be a, a much better leader by understanding people that perhaps disagree with you. You can learn a lot more. Perhaps ultimately you decide that what you feel is best is the way that you're going to vote, but if you have spoken to those individuals, you now understand what challenges you might be creating for them. And you understand if, first of all, if there's any mitigation required and how you can mitigate to help those individuals. So I just believe in, in talking to everybody, even somebody that I ultimately very much disagree with, because I can learn some things from those individuals. And sometimes views can change. You, you people can bring a perspective that you've never experienced. And so as elected officials, we owe it to listen to all of our community, not just half of it.
Uh, Doug, if this were still a partisan position, do you have a preference one way or the other?
I don't have a preference one way or the other, because I see good and bad on both sides when you get into parties. I'm basically a conservative at heart, so I remain independent and conservative pretty much because I don't like what's going on with the division that's being caused. The reason I'm also running is I, we need to have representative government again. I mean, when I go out doorbelling and when I'm canvassing, even in my precinct, I'm talking to people and I'm saying, listen, I want to be able to have open lines of communication with the constituents in my district, okay? We're trying to build up a database of people's emails. And that way, when something does come up in the council, we're able to send out the information and get a response back, because ultimately, the end game is we represent the people in the district we've been elected to, okay? And so being able to get their voices in the curriculum, the feedback from the people that we're representing. Remember, it's a representative government. What a, what a concept, right? Okay? So getting the feedback from the people that you're representing is, is the thing that's most important to me. How do you feel? And when I go talk to them individually, door to door, they've got questions they need answers to. And the, the other thing that came up, and a lot of people didn't realize this, is when we instituted the home charter thing that happened in 2015, what it did, it brought a lot of division in the council itself, okay? Let me give you an example for instance.
Well, and, and, uh, hold on, I'm sorry, need to interrupt you there. I just, I wanna move on. Hector, if this were a partisan position, do you have a preference one way or the other?
Uh, I've had several hundred conversations with people. I think three people asked me that question. Uh, people are interested in how, uh, my council position will improve their lives. I can totally understand why they ask that. Uh, and I know that I've spoken with, uh, Democrats, independents, and, and, uh, and Republicans. So the, the question isn't whether, uh, I am, uh, Republican or, or Democrat or Independent. They, they wanna know how voting for me will help them live a better life and, and have a better community. So I'm afraid that's my answer. This is a nonpartisan, partisan position, and, uh, we should treat it as such, and, uh, let's make things better for all of our, uh, constituents.
Okay, thanks. And then we'll, we'll move on now. Give us your final pitch for why voters should support you, and feel free to mention any prominent feel free to mention any prominent endorsements if you like. And we'll start with Doug.
Sure. People want transparency and honesty back in their government. No more hiding behind Zoom calls and and agendas that are just put forth by their own parties or friends. So that's why I mentioned about having an open forum for the constituents when you're in your district for them to respond and lay the issues out there before them. Whatever comes up, as we've been talking about, if they want, you're looking at a tax increase for whatever, if it's the sheriffs. You know, be transparent, be open. That's the thing that people are really desiring right now when I am talking to them. So, you know, even though I don't have a lot of it in my district, the Farm Bureau, Washington State Farm Bureau gave me their endorsement because I understand about the zoning issues and making sure that Southern Washington's land use for agriculture has a voice in the mix also. We cannot just develop and develop and then disregard the wonderful land that we have here for agriculture in Southwest Washington. So I'm on board with them to help protect their rights also.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hector, give us your final pitch.
I've spent 45 years in my career problem solving. I work with companies to find what the issue is, are, excuse me, and find a solution, work with them and solve the problem. They're not interested in how we got here, how we got here. They want to fix the problem no matter what. So I want to bring that to the council with me. Look at issues. Find what the actual problem is to that issue and then work with the rest of the council cooperatively and collaboratively to find how to solve that problem. So I feel that that's important. And I will do my best to make sure that we do that. And I have lots of community experience over the past 15 years, serving in many organizations, founder of many and serving on mental health and the Columbia River Mental Health Foundation. I worked with founding Southwest Washington Lulac. Was chair of the Southwest Washington Slow Foods Movement. And then also founding Community Roots Collaborative to build homes for the homeless and very low income folks. So it's a proven model now. We are building our second project. And so I want to move forward with being, taking those types of solutions into the county and make sure that we are following the path to make it a better community. As far as endorsements, I have the backing, the endorsement of our mayor, Anna Kearney Ogilvy, city council members, Diana Perez, Kim Harless and Ty Stover, as well as our two representatives, Monica Stonier and Sharon Wiley, and our state senator Annette Cleveland. So plus a few Vancouver school directors, school board directors, Tracy Barrows and Sandra Zavala Ortega. So I have folks that have known me for decades, know that I care deeply about this community. I give back to this community and I would like to help more people in our county.
Great, thank you. And Glenn, give us your final pitch.
Sure. First of all, thank you very much to the Columbian for putting this together today. I know it takes a lot of time to do it and I appreciate it on so many different levels that our voters can have one more avenue that they can be more informed. About the people that endorse and support me, one of the things that you'll notice is that they are bipartisan. Because I am the candidate that truly will work with both sides to get things together in our county. Some of the more familiar people that are supporting me, first of all, I'm proud that the Vancouver Firefighters Local 452 has endorsed me. And I am being supported by individuals in the community such as Ed and Casey Cody, Jim and Liz Luce, Royce Pollard, Larry Smith, Michael Lynch, Betty Sue Morris, Bart Hanson, Sarah Fox. And you can see from that list that it truly is nonpartisan. And that is because people want to get things done in our community. There's also, if you go to my website, glenforcouncil.com, you'll see that I have over 200 names of other individuals in the community that are equally as important. Everybody wants to have their voice equally heard. And I have five children that I want to look out for. And I want us here that are living in our county as well as our future generations to be able to have a great Clark County. We have treasured resources that we need to protect. You know, we have affordable housing issues. I am a member or I'm in an industry that I understand many of the elements that go into the challenge that we're facing for affordability. Everybody needs and wants our homeless to be indoors and protected and have mental health services available to them to make improvements in their life and to rejoin our community. Crime, everybody wants that to go down. And all of this is gonna take working together, not against. I have strong connections with staff and the council in Vancouver that I'm able to build a bridge between the county and the city. I think that is something that is very critical and something that hasn't existed for quite some time is a good working relationship between the two jurisdictions. But again, what it comes down to is that I will work hard for our county. I will work hard to compromise and to work with everybody to really improve our community and keep it a great place to live. And I appreciate anyone's vote.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks to all three of you for joining us. We appreciate it.